Just to remind our public comment rules, part of the purpose of this meeting is to afford Beaufort County residents and DCSB employees the opportunity to comment directly to the board. The board will have a comment, a public comment period lasting no more than thirty minutes. Pursuant to Board Policy BCR 7, the board has adopted the following rule for public comment periods. Speakers are to comply their comments to matters germane to the business of the board. Speakers are to speak only one time at any meeting and may not yield their time to another speaker. Speakers are to refrain from racial comments, obscenities, vulgarities, references to specific individuals by name, derogatory comments about specific individuals or other agreements that were established. Each speaker will be limited to no more than three minutes. The board will not normally respond to speakers. Speakers who violate the expectations of board during public participation will be asked to cease speaking and return to the meeting or leave the boardroom. Should speakers fail to abide by the reasonable directives of the presiding officer, the board may prohibit the offending speaker from participating in a permanent public participation session for a period not exceeding six months. And/or may request for approval of a participant on the boardroom and district rounds by law enforcement. The board reserves the right to waive or alter this procedure if, in the opinion of the board and as warranted by the circumstances of any particular meeting. This should be done by an affirmative authority vote in the board. We have set aside thirty minutes before we go into executive session. I want to assure you that we are going to allow for thirty minutes to speak. That is, we are going to time each speaker. We are not going to use up the time to speak, but to come and go from the podium. And we will, I have a set of cards up here. If you want to speak, you can see Mrs. Bushberry right up here and fill out one of the cards. But I'm sure everybody understands that. The board has questions.
I have two recommendations. Can you come to the question? Can you hear? We might have two recommendations. What do you want to do with the policy?
That would determine what we speak about in executive session, but I fully expect, I'm prepared to make some motions when we come out of the table. I have two recommendations. We can't hear.
I will have three recommendations when we come out of the table. You hear that?
That's a little better. All right. First speaker I have is Bonnie Almond.
I am Bonnie Almond, and I want to apologize if I appear to be reading. I just feel like what I have to say is really important, and I want it to come out right. I've worked in an organization led by Dr. Moss for several years now. First as an elementary principal, then a high school principal, and currently is the Director of Secondary Education for Beaufort County School District. I consider these opportunities a privilege and take the responsibilities very seriously. In thinking about the past couple of weeks, I must say, I must tell you, that in my experience, it is most evident that Dr. Moss is a classic transformational leader. In July of 2013, Dr. Moss led, along with the board and other stakeholders in the community in a process to write the Beaufort County School District strategic plan. It is an inspiring vision for our future. It is difficult to come into a new school district, even more so a new state, as one must build relationships with school district, staff, school staff, communities, and students. A new superintendent has to determine how to build on the current strengths of the district and how to approach change while trying to understand the history and the dynamics of the organization. Dr. Moss clearly has engaged in this process very effectively over the past two years and three months. Our district has been transformed in a very short amount of time. Dr. Moss has articulated the vision, motivated and inspired people to be engaged in this vision, provided direction, set priorities, been proactive, problem-solved around constraints, and held us accountable for meeting our goals. Why? Because of the students here in Beaufort County School District. Dr. Moss is also responsible for the delivery of the Beaufort County School District vision. It is his responsibility to build a team, coach others, and hold high expectations for adult and student performance. It is also his role to build leaders that can work independently, make collaborative decisions that will support the goals, and then get out of the way so they can do their job. Why? Because there are twenty-two thousand-plus children in this district that are depending on us. Dr. Moss is a principal superintendent. He believes the principle of a school is the number-one factor in school and student success. Research also says that. He also understands the amount of time spent, the depth of knowledge it takes, the commitment to serve, and the influence a principal has on students, staff, and community is huge. Being a principal in a very difficult job, yet one of the most rewarding roles an individual can experience, Dr. Moss cares very deeply about his principles. I can personally attest to this. Why? Because he cares about the students of Beaufort County School District and expects all of us to do the best we can. Dr. Moss also believes that principals and teachers must have a high level of support. It is a physical impossibility for a principal to meet every need in a school. There are not enough hours a day. I have personally experienced this myself. That is where the district-level leadership team comes in. Okay. And they're expected to be the experts. I would like to say today that the events of the past week are very unfortunate, to say the least, and I believe that people just simply do not know what goes on in public education. It's very complex, and we have a lot of things that come into play. Transform SC expects us to hit the standard. They do not understand the implications if our students do not meet the standards. Okay, thank you very much. I do want to say that Mr. Dr. Moss is a man that understands change and is brave enough to embark on the journey. Thank you.
Cassandra Davis. Hi, I'm Cassandra Davis, and I'm just a citizen here in Beaufort County. And I have read what's been going on in the paper, and I read your letter to the editor on Sunday, and I was here for kind of a middle ground. I think that from what I've read and from what the previous lady said, the superintendent, and what you had sent in your letter, is doing a good job, and someone that we would, you know, like to continue to do a good job. I also feel that we have certain standards in our county and in our community, and that a wrong has been done, and that we need to correct that wrong. I think that while this may go on in other communities, or it may be other standards, but just as you say to a child, "We don't do that in this, in our family, we don't do that in our community." So I think that we should recognize that the superintendent is doing a good job, and I trust you based on what you wrote, but I also think we should correct the error. We should rescind the position. We should have the board look at a new nepotism policy that meets our community's standards, and that we should then decide if we need this position, and if we do, then we should start over and do a new selection based on rules that are appropriate for our community, and then we should put it behind us and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Good afternoon, school board members. There appears to be a pattern of suspicion in this community when it comes to outsiders coming in, particularly in the realm of public education. There also appears to be a faction who worked to cultivate the seeds of discontent, distrust, and disillusionment right here in Beaufort County. I got to experience some of this when I arrived in 2008 as Principal of Cusa Elementary. There were so many who welcomed me with open arms, but there were a few of those who were not so welcoming. Shortly after my arrival, an anonymous email surfaced about a secret meeting of concerned individuals to discuss changes I was making and their dislike of those changes. After contacting a person in the email and offering to attend the meeting to discuss their concerns, this rather large group ended up being about nine people after it was communicated that I would be there. Thankfully, that storm blew over eventually, and we, as a Cusa community, were able to focus on the business of educating our students. I left Cusa a little over a year ago, and I am thankful for the relationships, memories, and leadership that were built there over the six years I was there. I give that background to express my concern that, once again, I see this culture of distrust around the recent hiring. Based on the credentials, Ms. Moss had a lot of expertise that will improve the opportunities of Beaufort County students. The interview process was conducted in precisely the same way as other interviews I have participated in on a district level. Nothing was done differently to find the best candidate for this position. Regarding the accusation of nepotism, there are many husbands and wives who work in the district. Not only do they share a common interest in educating our students, but each has a passion and talent for doing so. As I look at what has been accomplished here for the students and the community in the last three years, I'm very proud of what has been done collectively by all of us. We have an opportunity for students to attend two years of college tuition-free. There's an improvement in graduation rates. There are numerous school choices for parents to choose for their children, career and technical opportunities, iPads or tablets for every K-12 student, and increasing opportunities in the business and community to provide our students with a viable livelihood here in Beaufort County. Last March, the Advanced Ed accreditation team comprised of education professionals from all over the country confirmed this outstanding work and gave the district an excellent review. This beautiful area will never be sustainable as just a retirement and tourist area in place for our military bases without providing opportunities for our own youth to live and prosper here. They will simply take their talents elsewhere, and our community will continue to lose some of its best and brightest. We must continue to seek out those with the expertise, knowledge, skills, and proven track record of making a difference, and not shoot ourselves in the foot by throwing up roadblocks at cause and chase good people and talented people away. The recent alternative events is sad and unfortunate.
Ms. Dilbert, I'm going to have to ask you to close, please.
Thank you. And I ask that we continue with the continued leadership and vision of Dr. Moss. Thank you.
Edgar Williams.
Good afternoon, school board members, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Edgar Williams, a good citizen of Beaufort County. And for the last few days, the Beaufort Gazette and other papers have put us on the map as we relate to the nepotism. It's amazing when I read about the procedure, if there are procedures that could be followed, and the school board has the right to amend or approve those procedures, evidently it wasn't done. Hiring someone, family member, or someone that you know probably exists since time or way back, because I can name something that exists in the school right now, but that's not the issue. The issue is that had we followed the procedure that was outlined by the school board, and who changed that procedure, and if that procedure was changed, did the school board have any input in it? Has it had another procedure in the school? That's the issue. The accountability of the school board, we should not sit by it, even if the policy has a problem on nepotism or not, but the policy should then be approved by this board, and then we, the public, would know exactly where you're coming from and where we would be coming from. To hire someone that has the qualification is not a problem, I don't think. The best qualifier, or the senior qualifier, I don't know which way you do it. I'm just here because it seems like we have a cloud of dust over our head, and the cloud of dust sits over here, ladies and gentlemen. But what is being done, or what's not being done? Beaufort County don't need that. We need to move ahead. We have the kids, the teachers, we have them to be accountable for. Beaufort County is one of the best places to be. Beaufort County is one of the highest-paid within the state of South Carolina for teachers, but not for the classified employee. We need to make sure we bring good people to Beaufort County, so that when we bring good people here, the student can be more successful in their endeavor. I'm not here to advise anyone. All I'm here to say that you should follow the policy, make the rule, live by those rules, that we all can be on the same accord. I thank you very much. You're there.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
I'd like to know what this Board of Education intends to do about the hundreds of hours of compensatory services this school district owes my blind special needs son. Beaufort County School District Special Needs Director, I'm not going to mention her name, agreed to them in writing and has yet to make good on the agreement. I don't have an attorney on staff, so preserving the matter is difficult for me and my family. Beaufort County School District agreed to pay for my son's hypotherapy, was paying for a while, and then abruptly stopped. Secondly, what is the procedure for recalling the current Board of Education members? Finally, why would the district stop paying for my son's compensatory services and hire Mr. Moss's wife at a ninety K a year salary? This man doesn't care. He has a million-dollar golden parachute. Thank you.
I hope I said that right, sir.
Growing up with that name, I've come to tolerate a lot of pronunciations. My name's David Stridinger, and I live in the district too. I have a son who's a senior. I'd like to address the issue that's been swirling around through the press about the hiring and nepotism. There are legal and ethical issues there that we need to take time to look into, to process, full investigation, but I'm going to ask the board to deal with more immediate issues, and those are leadership gaps that have been demonstrated. First, I think Dr. Moss should have anticipated, before he took action, the possible misunderstanding of his actions and somehow headed them off, perhaps going the extra mile, coming to the board, getting career approval. You know, vision is an important part of leadership, and I heard that Dr. Moss has vision. It should have been used in this situation, and we wouldn't all be here, and this crowd wouldn't be here. The second, and I think the more serious issue that the board should deal with, is Dr. Moss's reaction. Instead of moving to diffuse the situation by acknowledging the legitimacy of the terms, and perhaps acknowledging that he made mistakes, he's taken an arrogant and bad posture, which only magnifies the situation. The number of people in this room, I think it's testimony, and that I doubt that you should give this kind of a credit. So I'm asking the board now to show leadership and deal with the situation. Alter Dr. Moss's position, have him acknowledge that this is an issue and he didn't handle it correctly. Perhaps have Mrs. Moss removed from the position and restart that process, but something needs to be done. The citizens of this county deserve leadership, either from Dr. Moss or from you all who supervise it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Rebecca Bass, and I reside and vote in Port Royal. I am not here to give a performance appraisal of Dr. Moss, but rather, many of us are here to give our reaction to the events that have been reported in the local news over the past week or so. I would like to express my negative reaction to the having, excuse me, to the hiring of Darlene Moss into the direct chain of command of our school superintendent. To me, it is not a question of whether any guidelines or policies were violated. They may not have been violated, but to me, this situation is such that it creates, as you, as the gentleman before me expressed, a reaction that invited all of us to take time out of our busy lives to be here this evening to discuss with you. I spent most of my career as an international corporate executive with big companies, and we were told to avoid even the appearance of impropriety in terms of our ethical feelings within the companies and without. Even if the manager in between Mrs. Moss and her husband is a person of the most unimpeachable integrity, the situation here does give the appearance of impropriety. This is a situation that unfortunately endangers the public's trust in both the superintendent and in the school board. I recommend that the board reinstitute the policy that prohibits any kind of nepotism when you go into your executive session this evening. I have been volunteering in our schools here for over seven years. I am not part of any conspiracy against superintendent or people who come here from other places. In fact, I will tell you that I myself came here about thirteen years ago, and delighted to be here and never wanted to live anywhere else. But I simply don't think that close friends or relatives should be hired where they work directly in the chain of command of the superintendent. That is what I believe our policy should be in Beaufort County, and I thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you today.
Thank you, Ms. Bass.
I'm Chris, my name's Christina Roberts. I have four children currently in this district, one that graduated over a year ago, and my question to the board is, at a position that is ninety thousand dollars a year, where did that money come from? And could that money be allocated somewhere else into the district that would serve our students? Not only, I understand that we need people of leadership to spearhead different things in our school district to help implement different ideas, but I'm trying to say, ninety thousand dollars, you've got classified workers that make a third less than what that position is holding right now. So I'd like to know, is there any way that you can tell us where that ninety thousand dollars came for to pay for a new position in this school district when that ninety thousand dollars could be better spent on our students and not on somebody else's position? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I grew up in this school district. My mother taught in this school district for over twenty years, so I know how the school district works. I grew up in it. I find it appalling that the superintendent is allowed to change policy that allows a family member to be hired within the district. In our schools, husbands and wives are not allowed to work in the same school. This is a district position, which eventually falls under the superintendent. He is her boss. It is wrong. It's unethical. I am the ninth person to speak this evening. I was the second to sign up. I find it a little funny that you don't go in the order that they sign up.
Hello. Come on, everybody here?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Chairman Evans and members of the school board. I just have a few comments. The idea that there's some subversive underground movement here at play is just ridiculous. It's just a strong man argument. The issue is not whether the superintendent's wife is or isn't qualified. It's the deceitful manner that took place to make it happen that's the issue here tonight. As to whether it's legal, as some of this board have suggested, or being the question of whether it's legal is not something I can comment on. I want to ask the board, is it moral and is it ethical? Let's not forget all the things that used to be legal in this country. Slavery, legal. Repugnant. Denying women the right to vote, legal but repugnant. Interning Japanese-Americans, legal, repugnant. Interracial marriage, legal, repugnant. Let's for once get on, get ahead of this issue. Let's get on the right side, not whether or not this passes some kind of legal test or is allowed to thread the legal needle, but is it moral and is it ethical? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Decker.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I worked with Dr. Moss for eight years in Hope County, North Carolina. I had the pleasure of actually teaching one of his three daughters. In the entire time that I was in Hope County, which was pretty much the entire time that Dr. Moss was there, well, he was there actually longer than me, but for the eight years that I was there, I had nothing but the highest respect and highest regard for Dr. Moss. I know the colleagues that I worked with, administrators, parents, teachers, school employees, they all had a great deal of respect in regard for Dr. Moss. I became principal in northeastern North Carolina, in Hyde County, which was adjacent to Beaufort, not Beaufort, it's pronounced, spelled the same but pronounced differently. And the six years I was there, Dr. Moss was superintendent for most of his ten years in Beaufort, he was the county next to me. And I knew many administrators, and many teachers, and many school employees, and I had many friends that weren't associated with the school system, that all had a great deal of respect for Dr. Moss. And as well as Mrs. Moss, those that had the opportunity to work with Mrs. Moss. And when I was in Hope County, I had the opportunity to work with Mrs. Moss as well, and I didn't know of anyone that didn't have the highest regard and respect for her, too. Last school year, even though, let me back up, even though I had the, even though my wife, who was, had a great deal to do with us moving here, even though her grandfather built the fifth or sixth house on Frip Island back before there was a bridge, and she's been coming down here on vacation, and my in-laws basically live here full-time, well, about half of the year. about half of the year. Even though we had a lot of reasons to come here to move to Beaufort, I certainly would not have moved my family here if I didn't have the highest respect in regard to Dr. Moss. And I certainly still feel that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Del Forge.
Mr. Chairman, a follow-up observation. I think it must be a limited time. It would be unfortunate for those who have worked for the school district to not get a chance to share their concerns, because we're out of the past 30 minutes. And if people who work for the school district are even talking about 30 minutes, I don't think it's fair for those who may not get a chance to speak because district employees are looking for something like this. I just, thank you.
I would only remind it, Mr. Rivers, that district employees are members of our community also and have the right to speak.
It's not, it's not a logic, but it's not unfair.
That's going to be up to the board. When we, let us finish this public session and then we can go from there. At the end of this 30 minutes of speaking time, the board wants to either extend it or have a continuation after executive session will now be the will of the board. Kimberly Morgan.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. I know, you know, time, time is running over. My name's Kimberly Morgan. I was, I'm almost 40 years old. I've lived in Beaufort my entire life. Wasn't born here, my father was in the military. I've attended school here, kindergarten through college. I went to school here, I graduated from this Battery Creek. My former principal is sitting with my daughter. Everyone before me has said amazing things. They really made amazing points. And I'm not here to beat anybody up. I'm not here to be ugly. I just want to say a couple of things. The first is, there's no culture of suspicion. What it is, is this is our community. We've invested our time, our money. These are our children. You know, you have to earn our trust. You have to earn our respect. That's all it is. And the second thing is, maybe I don't understand public education. My background is in criminal justice. I was a 911 dispatcher. Right now, I'm a genealogist and a historical researcher. But I do know right from wrong. And whether or not Mrs. Moss is qualified, that's not really the question. Like Mrs. Bass said, the question is the appearance of any impropriety. And the series of decisions that led up to her hiring are, for lack of a better term, very shady. Very shady. If she's qualified, come up and say, you know what, my wife's interested in this job. We're going to restructure this job. She's interested, we're going to pay $90,000 a year. Where did that money come from, by the way? And we're going to change the nepotism rule. Okay? Make everything public, not just the parts that you want to cherry pick. Okay? Director of Innovation, there's not a lot of clarity as to what that is, because I thought, I was under the impression that you already have innovators. You have teachers who are in the classroom every day with these children. They're the innovators. And a big, big thing about all this is, once you break our trust, you're not going to get it back. And that's what's happened here. The appearance of impropriety has broken our trust. And it's, it's a shame, because I'm raising my child in this community, as many of us are. These are our taxpayer dollars. And there's two things that really route people up, and that's their money and their children. And you just, you've got to understand, you have a lot of responsibility, and I know you know that, but you've just got to be transparent when you're dealing with money. You have to be honest. You have to have integrity. Because it's our money and our kids on the line. And I just wish things were done differently. I really do. And I, and like I said, I'm not here to slam anybody. I'm sure Mrs. Moss is lovely and qualified, but the way it was done is wrong and it needs to be rectified. And if it's not rectified properly, you know, most people I've talked to are prepared to go through the proper channels, including recalling the school board. I mean, that's, that's one of our options. Because it's that serious to us. These are, these are our kids. Okay? This is our trust. Thank you.
Elizabeth Morrow.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm a parent of a student, two students. I have a child at Bluffton High School, a junior, and I also have this child at Bluffton Middle School who's in the seventh grade. Absolutely love both schools, the staff and the administrators at the school. My concerns tonight are, number one, I implore you to, before you go into executive session, please extend the time so that every member present who's written on a card has the ability to speak. I think the community is owed that much. I'm suspicious, I'm not sure where that's coming from. Yes, there's been banter in the paper, Instagram, people are going to do that, they vent their frustration on social media. However, yet I can tell you as a parent and a citizen of this community, walking in this evening, as I'm going to the restroom, I saw this man, and also to Beaufort County Sheriff's Office, talking about people leaving meetings with attitudes. I'm looking around this room, I think everybody here, I think we're here out of concern and/or support for the school board. I don't think anyone came tonight to cause a stir, or the fact that we would need police presence. And the officer actually said, anybody leaving with an attitude, we're citizens for God's sake. I don't think anyone came here tonight to do anything, to bring anyone harm or anything of that nature. So when that mindset is already set, I'm walking into a meeting tonight, now I'm sitting here thinking, well gee, this is what I'm walking into, this is how our school district feels about us as parents. My next question is, I think we have good schools in our county, and I think we have more than qualified staff members. Like everyone's saying, I think it's just a perception at the end of the day, how the position came to be, how should you find, I think your wife is absolutely qualified based on only what I saw in the paper. I think you're more than qualified for the job that you have because we're making strides in our school district. However, yes, once again, as a community member, it is the appearance at the end of the day, I'm sorry, Dr. Morrow, but I think you are in a heart in between a rocky and hard place. There is no way that I feel objectionally and professionally that you'll ever be able to write or bring about concerns about the performance of Dr. Moss's wife, because once again, he is your direct supervisor. I also think we've opened up a Pandora's box, because now that we've done this, are we going to allow other members who work at the district level to bring their spouses in to be employed if they are qualified for a job, it creates a conflict of interest that I think once now that the door is open, unless it's closed, we're going to continue to go down that road. My other question is, can funds be spent? Could they have been spent on our students and our teachers? We have needs in our school. Could that money have been spent elsewhere? Like I said, we have skilled, qualified, and talented educators. Could those duties for this job that's been created not have been divvied out to other people we already have working in our district? And then last, as a parent, morally. Even when it starts, walking in these shoes right now, and I ask this of each of you board members, could you look your child in the face and say, you know what, I think it's perfectly okay what you've done. No one's going to question it. It doesn't need to be brought before the board. We'll just make the changes, do what we need to do. The community will get over it. The people we serve who voted us in office will get over it. I don't think that's going to be the case.
Ms. Morrow, I'm going to have to ask you to close, please.
All right. In closing, just morally, I ask you all to ask yourselves, before you go into executive session, if the tables were turned and you were walking in the shoes of the community members and the parents who are concerned, would you have still made this decision if this had involved your family members? Thank you.
Stu Butler.
My name's Stu Butler. I've been, I was a teacher for eight years, and after that, a businessman, I had a business in this community. I'll be short. I think to hire a wife or a spouse for your administration is wrong because you're the, you're the supervisor, and you make the last decision on that person's abilities. And I just think it was wrong by the school board to, I guess they didn't approve it, I just think it was wrong for, and I, I think he's doing a good job. I just have a problem, I don't think his wife should be had. It's a spousal thing, and it's very nepotism at its worst. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Decker. David Rockwell.
My name is David Rockwell, and I've worked in this district for 40 years. I know something about innovation. First two computers that were put into a classroom, went into my classroom, to see what we could figure out to do with them. A year later, I was asked to go to the middle school and then junior high to start a computer lab program to find out what we could do with computers. I trained all of the first computer lab teachers in this district. At my own expense, I got a master's in educational technology. I was on the founding board of the South Carolina Association of Educational Technology and was its president for a number of years. I say this because I believe that there are plenty of people in the classroom, as I was for the entire time, by the way, that I held these positions and trained teachers without a stipend or a $90,000 salary. That there are people in our classroom and in this district who are more than qualified to bring innovation and excellence to us. I am a little bit concerned that we have to think that if it weren't for the Moss family, poor Beaufort County couldn't possibly be getting into the area of innovation. I'm also distressed at the attitude the board seems to have, be taking towards the public. The things in the paper, your lack of response, your lack of willingness to embrace this is distressing to me. Dr. Moss is probably a bit superintendent. If he could walk on water, he still made a very serious mistake, if nothing else, by the impression it gives this, this district and the people of the public about how we're going to operate things. I'm glad, Bill, that you trust Dr. Moss. But what are you going to do in seven, eight years if he's retired and we get a superintendent and he does things you don't trust and decides to hire his family? You've already set a precedent. Board members, some of you I've worked with as president of Beaufort County Education Association, I've stood before you for years representing the interests of teachers. Laura, Earl, you've been on the board. You need to step up and take responsibility for this. And even again, if it was technically okay, this was inappropriate and you're setting a bad precedent. Thank you.
Patricia Higgins.
I'm a northerner, and I have a bachelor of science and a master's degree and 30 years of teaching experience, having taught every grade except third. So, have also taught in six different states, New Hampshire, Vermont, New York, New Jersey, and even South Carolina for two months. I really think that even though Mr. Moss may be a good superintendent, his approach was wrong and sets a very poor example for our students. It would have been much better had he approached the board and said, look, my wife is interested in this job, what do you think? And gone from there. I have no fault with husbands and wives or family members working in a system in all of those six states that I did. My last state I, our district, had needed a new principal. He was put in one school, his wife was hired in a, in another school. That's two. Superintendent left for another job. A principal in a neighboring community applied. His wife is already employed as a librarian in the school. He was the best candidate, and I think this is what we need to look at. Whatever, your credentials and your resume and your observations and viewing, if you are the best for the job, then that's who you hire. Now, in this case, there were so many, many mistakes made. And I only say I think Beaufort County has a wonderful school system. I volunteered in many. But I also think that we have to be a little more careful with our taxpayer dollars. When I volunteered three days a week two years ago at St. Helena, they had a principal and three assistant principals. Now, in all those six states that I taught in, we only had one good secretary and one principal. So I think we need to be a little bit more careful with our dollars spent and on the right things. Someone, one of the people prior to speaking, said, yes, our teachers are innovative. Why do we need a $90,000 position for innovation in education? Any school that I ever taught in, principals were at the helm. They heard something was good or interesting, they would pass it around to the staff, we would meet, discuss if it was worthwhile, then we would have workshops and carry on from there.
I'm going to have to ask you to close.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Good luck.
We have exceeded the 30 minutes of speaking time that we discussed. Board members, we've had a comment by Mr. Campbell. I would tell you that we have six speakers still to go. Do I have a motion about whether we continue or what? Mr. Duncan? Shall we finish these six? Okay. Do I have a second? Mrs. Anderson, a second? Any discussion? All those who are in favor of extending to allow the following, the last six people must speak. Thank you. That's unanimous. Okay, we don't need, well, we do need to talk, I'm sorry. George Smith.
Good evening. I'd like to thank you for that extension, sir. I made the cut. This is not a debate that, you know, we're on opposite sides. I think we're all here to debate the issue of what, what is right and what is wrong. I come to the podium with several hats. I'm an adoptive parent. We have 16 children, 14 of those had special needs over the years. I come as a teacher of five years in Covington, Georgia, and I come as six years as a mayor and a year old council from the community I live in. And what has happened here is, not that Mr. Moss, he used poor judgment, in my opinion, but I hold each one of you members accountable for letting it happen. Y'all are asking, where did the $90,000 come from? The $90,000 ought to have been in your budget for a position. And if it was there, what's the question? So I hope that y'all will disclose the budget and your salaries for staff, and that, I certainly hope that's listed in there for that position to be hired, that it wasn't the genie out of the bottle like the, being accused of. And number two is if he can change that policy without y'all knowing or doing what other policies are going to be changed. Y'all got to get more accountability in the school board. Y'all gotta get more accountability in the school board to what your leader's doing. Six years as mayor, I never got to vote because there was never a tie. Top dog and I didn't even get to vote. Y'all people are the ones that vote. The superintendent is the administrator, he comes up with policies and it's up to y'all, it's up to each one of y'all to scrutinize, look over, and have a consensus. Doesn't mean you have to win, but it means that at least needs to be brought up and looked at. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Smith, Mr. Smith, just a minute. I don't normally comment, but I, I thought the paper-
Now, your rule said there was no comment. Let's go by the rules that you laid out before.
I'm not gonna argue with you, I just wanna clarify, I wanna clarify something. And I think the paper made it clear. This is, the money was in our budget and it's not created funds. So, Mr. Jim Rickett?
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, my old friend Mike and Earl and Laura down there. I wanna go back over the 2010 change and we arrived where we were. It was on the agenda in October nineteen, October nineteen, two thousand and ten, that specific policy. During the discussion, and that was brought to the board with a policy that was administrative policy. During the discussion, it was kind of agreed that there'd be a committee appointed by Dr. Truesdale. And I made the motion that it be tabled. And that committee was appointed and included some school board members. And the policy was changed and I have an email dated November one with the new policy which was changed recently. And that policy was to be signed by Dr. Truesdale, the superintendent, and by the number two person, Dr. Roswell. And that was distributed to the board and to all of the people in the school district. That policy. Now, I, I say that the school board was negligent, we should have made it a, a board policy then instead of leaving it what it was. But somehow it got changed. The newspaper says in August, shortly after the superintendent signed the, the job description for the hiring of this person. But he can't remember that he did it. The attorney, which I haven't met, said it was done in August. While that job description was already out there. Superintendent can't remember when he signed it. That whole thing doesn't need to smell test. My career was with a major international company until I retired here. I saw people in senior positions lose their job on ethics matters that weren't this bad. And I'm very disappointed in the attitude of most of the school board members that I've seen. And the one that is in my district, I will definitely be working in after I read the editorial here. I think the editorial, this board needs to make a stern policy and I see, saw where Cubic County Administrator Sutek suggested a joint policy. And I think that should be done so that the county has one nepotism policy countywide.
I'm gonna have to ask you to close, Mr. Rickett, if you want.
Well, that's, that's all I have to say. And I will certainly not be supporting school board members that don't do something. I don't say he has to be fired. But there has to be some justification or some action by the board to show that he didn't need to smell test with this change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Richard, is it Beanie or?
Bizzie.
Bizzie, okay, that is an S, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. My name is Richard Bizzie, I live on Hilton Head Island, I'm a taxpayer and I'm a voter. Dr. Moss claims that he acted ethically, did not play a role in hiring his wife aside for helping restructure the job and approving Derrick Rhodes' recommendation. Well, please, the only way his wife could apply for the ninety thousand dollar a year job was for the job description to be changed. And that was done by Dr. Moss although he can't remember when. And it was Dr. Moss who unilaterally changed the district's nepotism rule. Now, had Dr. Moss not changed the nepotism, nepotism rule and had Dr. Moss not changed the job description, his wife couldn't have applied for the position and we wouldn't be here tonight. And Dr. Moss also claims he notified you, Mr. Evans, of his wife's interest in the job. He received your go-ahead, presumably, for his wife to proceed and apply for the job. And yet, Mr. Evans did not share this information with the rest of the elected board members here tonight. Now, don't you think, Mr. Evans, that you should have done that and shared that information? Mr. Evans, you claim, at least according to newspaper reports, that you were not aware of Dr. Moss reviewing the district's policy and nepotism. But you were told by Dr. Moss himself that his wife was interested in the job. Somebody is lying. Dr. Moss says that the reason he and his wife have been consistently employed in the same district over the years is that we're, quote, "both highly regarded educators". Well, that is not the issue, Dr. Moss. You know it and I know it. As superintendent, you've had an obligation to set the bar high, very high, and not stoop to these kind of shenanigans. One final point, seven board members here tonight have remained silent on this controversy. And I think that's outrageous. You work for us, the taxpayers of Beaufort County. Have the courage to come off the sidelines and do your job. Finally, there are many unanswered questions, no question about that. The board may decide to have some sort of an investigation. But if it does, it needs to be an independent investigation. And the fact that you, Mr. Evans, have already come out in full, unqualified, though in your words, supported Dr. Moss, seems to me to disqualify you from any independent investigation. No other board member has offered such praise for Dr. Moss. So I think that any kind of probe by this school board should be done by ten members and Mr. Moss to refuse himself. And finally, while this investigation is underway, I think that Darlene Moss ought to do the right thing and resign her ninety thousand dollar a year job immediately. Now, she may be qualified, Dr. Moss, again, that's not the issue. It's the least that she can do to remove this stain from the Beaufort County School District. Thank you very much.
Calvin Jordan?
First, thank the board for extending the time so that I could talk. And I appreciate those board members and I've written you several times in the last couple of days. For those of you that responded, thank you. And I want to thank my own representatives who tried to help me to understand between what it is to be on the board to make policy and what it is to let a superintendent carry out the administration. I was shocked when I read Sunday's paper. Shocked. I was shocked at Mr. Evans' letter and I had to read it more than a few times. But the words that shocked me the most were his words that Dr. Moss merely made edits. Merely made edits. It wasn't that long ago that a principal at Beaufort High School merely made edits with true, with school grades to help the school. All he did was merely make edits.
That's right.
And he's no longer with us and you, the board, made sure of that. Because he merely made edits. He's gone. The board knew about it, got rid of him. Now we have a superintendent who merely makes edits. That's all he did. But those were some, more than merely edits. They were some pretty big edits. Now, trying to understand the difference between policymakers and those that carry out administration on the day-to-day operation, I think the question for the board is this. What do you ask the board? What is your responsibility? When an employee oversteps his administrative boundaries? Especially, especially when it's for his benefit? That's what you need to ask yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Jacob Martin?
Good evening, Mr. Campbell.
Good evening.
Old members. I didn't come here intending to speak tonight. And after Mr. Smith and my good friend, Mr. Jim Rickett, I probably don't even need to speak. And while I was sitting over there, you know, I'm indicting this board. You are responsible for this. You allowed this to happen. Because I have known every member elected to this panel over the last thirty years. I've known them, known all the superintendents that you've had over the last thirty years. And I've never, you know, I know all of you, oh, most of you, but no, all your friends are mine. People I highly respect. But to allow this kind of disgrace to come on our county, on our community? The indictment is against you, the board.
Thank you.
That's what it is. There's no precedent, this is no precedent about the superintendent's family or wife getting employment in the district. That's a clear holding, every superintendent we have had, wives have been accommodated in some ways, their company, their justice county has cooperated with Beaufort County and vice versa to make those things move, move as smoothly as possible. Don't you ever have this kind of disgrace? It's, it's, y'all gotta fix it. And you know how to fix it. You gotta fix it. And Bill? You the chairman. You gotta fix it.
Thank you, Jim. Mona Lisa Dixon?
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
At first, I was not going to speak. I know some of our principals and we were back there, we were saying, you know, do we want to speak and we wanna come up and talk? I've been in this district for twenty-one years and have been under maybe four or more superintendents. And one thing I must say about Dr. Moss is that I hear a lot of people talking about his integrity and everything else. But I can say this, that he cares about all of our kids. All of the kids here. He really looks at for us as, as they said, he is a principal's leader. And he really cares about the kids, he really cares about what we're doing in our buildings and everything else. The surprise shock was not what was in the paper, it was the responses that were in the paper and the attacks on people that I've never seen in Beaufort before. And never seen how we, we did some personal attacks. I must say I was within the process of hiring Darlene Moss. And on that process, and we were, we went through that process, she was the best candidate for that job and that position. A lot of people wanted to know what we feared or that we pressured. And I think all of you know me, Mona Lisa Dixon. I'm not pressured by anything and I don't fear anything. Fear is false evidence appearing real. You have a man here who has integrity. He has been able to do certain things that other superintendents have not. Especially when our schools are underperforming schools and make movements that I don't think any other superintendent would have done. So as far as his integrity, I can speak highly on it, is that he does have an integrity bone. Every bone in his body, he looks and every decision that he makes, he makes in the look up for our children. I understand that some people, the, the way they look at this, that perception is reality. Well, perception is not always reality because, as a lot of you know, that sometimes the perception that some people say about me could be different and said things about it that is not the truth. So therefore, I understand what our community, but I want the community to know that he does care about kids and, no, my time is not up, thank you. And to know that he does care about kids and that his, everything that he does is for our children. Thank you.
Okay, board, we have completed the, and heard from all the people, completed cards. We are, we are finished with public comment. And I will look for the motion to move into executive session.
I have a consideration. As former chairman of this board, former member, drafted in the seventies, and I would ask further consideration and due please.
Shall we extend the comment time to hear one more? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, hon, hon.
I'll be brief.
Sir, would you please introduce yourself?
I definitely would. I'm J.J. Miller, retired sergeant, U.S. Air Force. I served in the school board back in the seventies. I raised, I also was chairman of this board and I, I care about it quite deeply. My wife worked at the school system, two kids graduated from school in the system. And I sat on the school board. And I think that beautiful word is nepotism. Every time I ran for the school board, I let my community know that my wife was a teacher. When time come to raise teachers' salary or even talk about it and come down to the last vote, I said, "Put me down as abstaining." Nepotism. So to say you don't know what nepotism is, I got a whole problem with that. I think that if you're going to Harvard, Yale, or Princeton, they would have taught you that in law school. And to say that, to think we all are not aware of the fact that what happened in another county has similarity in nature. But the fact is nepotism. And one thing, Mr. Chairman, I have a problem with you, believe it or not. My problem would be what, how you would sit at the board meeting and say that you were okay about something when there was eleven members of the board, seven had a problem, according to news media, and four apparently did not. Saying the worst in the world, we teach in our case mathematics and physics, that we don't know the seven business folks any day of the week. But if that was the case, Mr. Rivers, you should have continued to do what you started to do, sir. You should have objected, "Mr. Chairman, what is the vote?" And if it wasn't what you thought it was, ask them to repeat for whom they had voted for. That would have stopped that. And then have a chairperson to make a- And then have the chairperson to make a statement of that, I find it a little almost ridiculous. Sitting in high places, a man has allegedly earned a PhD, that used to mean something. Honesty was one of them, sir. Honesty was one of them. And I believe you check situations, Thondike and Wester, it still means the same 40 years ago as it means today. They have not changed. So then, I have a problem with that, sir. And then, all due respect, the board inception, I think, sir, you need to step aside. Step aside, because you don't mean personality any good. If you did, you would not have let happen what happened. And I want to thank you for listening to me, and I'm walking because I walked all over Europe and several other places for you folks to get your PhD and doctorate, and come home and try to cheat us out of a few decent people who voted for you, knowing they thought they had the best press. Well, sir, I'll tell you again, I'd never have voted for you. If I was sitting on the board for some reason, I'm talking to the news media. You had lawyers to come negotiate your contract. That's the saddest thing I've ever heard of. At least, I can understand it, if you talk to the board, and you've got a differentiation between salaries, I can understand that, you've got an attorney to come and sit and talk with you, but to have them negotiate your salary, something wrong with that, sir. That was from the get-go. You should have given us some idea, what kind of man we were looking, what kind of man we could be seeing. And I regret to say that, sir, but you should step aside. Thank you.
For the record, sir, will you identify yourself?
My name is John T. Miller.
Thank you.
Former chairman of this board, former president of this board, secretary of this board, and vice president, and president, vice president of the board, technical school board out there.
Thank you.
You work like a delegate, so just let us down, because we are depending on you for the better of education.
The agenda calls for us to go into executive session. I need a motion. The executive session is to review personnel hiring. Could I have a motion? Court ready? Mr. Payne, second. Do we have any discussion? The topic is personnel hiring, and we will have, who we usually have an executive session, 11 board members, our attorney, and Dr. Moss.
Excuse me, before you, but I think, I was the newspaper, I think that you have to specify a specific topic.
Personnel hiring.
But it has to be more specific.
No, we don't believe it does. Go ahead, Mr.-
We're going to discuss what we got in the space, about board members, and it need to be about board members. And then, once we come to a consensus or a decision among board members, then if we want to improve non-elected people, that's something different. I think it should be something where the executive people come together, air what happened, our concern, make a decision, and then share that decision with people who are not elected.